Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call this meeting of the Town Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Priscilla, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Seidel.
President.
Commissioner Costello. Commissioner Kara.
Present.
Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Reitensmith.
And present, except I gotta figure out when this.
Push the white button.
White button.
Oh, we got it, yeah.
Present. That's enough.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Everybody has a copy of the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right. Okay, now do I hear motion to approve the agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All right, good motion and a second. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. All right. Easy peasy. We have approval of the minutes. I think everybody has the minutes of the August 6th, 2019 regular meeting in their packets. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes?
I have none.
Looking at you, Commissioner Reitensmith.
No. Which one?
When it's red, it's on.
Oh, so that's why I have to be careful what I say.
All right, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
All right, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the August 6th, 2019 regular meeting, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, and the motion carries. All right, we have no old business on the agenda, and which brings us to public hearings. And public hearing CU 19-02, a request for a conditional use permit for property addressed at 2110 North Juniper Avenue to be used for duplex. Use is allowed in our residential A zoning district with a conditional use permit. The applicant is Nadine Robelli. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Robelli.
Robelli, okay, thank you. All right, and we will begin. I'll ask everyone that's present that would like to testify at this hearing to come up to the podium to be sworn in. Now, just because you come up to get sworn in does not mean you have to testify, but you cannot testify without being sworn in. So if you think there's even a small chance that you're gonna wanna say something tonight, please come up and get sworn in now, 'cause you just never know. And if you change your mind later, we have to stop everything and go back and swear in, and it's just not any fun, so come on.
Looks like we're gonna have everybody.
All right, very good. I could ask everyone to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your full name, please.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I am about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, and with that, I will turn to Priscilla for the staff report.
So this is CU 19-02, set at 2110 North Juniper Street, with a conditional use permit for duplex in a residential A zoning district. The property is a single-family home with an attached accessory apartment. The property owner would like to sell it as a duplex. There are other duplexes in the neighborhood, so it would not affect the value of nearby properties, and it would be in harmony with the surrounding area. Section 2.2 of the Land Use Code of 2010 defines a duplex as two dwelling units on a single parcel generally sharing a common wall. Page 5-34 of the Comprehensive Plan of the Town of Silver City states housing needs. Based on feedback at public meetings, the most pressing housing issue in Silver City is the lack of affordable rental units and senior housing. The definition of a conditional use permit is a permit issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission that authorizes the recipient to make use of property for a conditional use in accordance with the requirements of the Land Use Code, as well as any additional requirements imposed by the commission. Here is a map of the property, aerial view. Here is a front view of the property. Here is the property next to it, and then there's an empty lot on the other side. Here's a side view of the property. As you can see, it has the home on the top floor and then the apartment on the bottom floor. And this is right behind the property, there's another set of duplexes. The Planning and Zoning Commission in approving a conditional use permit shall make the following findings as required by the Land Use Code and Zoning Code, Section 6.3.7, and may attach to the permit such reasonable requirements in addition to those specified in the Land Use Code to ensure the development in its proposed location will not endanger the public health or safety, will not injure the value of adjoining or nearby properties, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town. The Community Development Department recommends approval of this request as it meets all four required findings: will not endanger the public health and safety, will not injure the value of adjoining or nearby properties, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town.
All right, thank you. Priscilla, any questions from the Commission for Staff? All right. I'd like to ask the applicant to come to the podium and please state his question. And I'd like to ask you to pay particular attention to those four findings. Provided we do vote to approve this, we will be required to prove that it meets those four findings, and so any help you can offer us in justifying that would be appreciated.
Okay, I just.
And just push the little white button there, so it turns red, so everyone can hear you. Thank you.
So just quick write-up, I just said, I along with my husband have owned and lived in both units for the past 10 years, making improvements for our own enjoyment. We are now selling the property. This property, as a duplex, will help fill the need for quality rentals in town. And my husband and I find this property as a duplex will not endanger the public health or safety. The whole, there's a whole large parking lot, as you noticed, in the back. From the front, people usually just think it's a short, little, small ranch house, not realizing you have to go into 22nd Street, realize 10 foot below is the lower level, and then you still have the hill, and it goes further back. So it's got plenty of its own space in the back. The lot that is empty is still owned by Ken Havens, and when he was still healthy enough, he used to come and weed whack and say he's just gonna let his kids inherit that lot. So he never did end up building anything on it. But at one time, he did own the property that my husband and I own. As far as not injuring the value of adjoining nearby properties, I think we've increased the value for the neighborhood compared to what it was. It was fixed me up when we bought it, and my husband and I fixed it so that we could live in one of the units and rent out the other. And over time, our needs have changed, so when one of our children was here, the two-bedroom upstairs, we lived in that, you know, and so over time, it's changed. As far as specific value, what's public knowledge is that the property is for sale, asking 199, 900, and right now, it's pending the sale. And it isn't harmony with the area it's located. If one looks to see where one gets through the alley to park in the back, one is going past the side of the duplex. But that duplex that Priscilla pointed out also has a two-car garage, one for each unit, which is literally facing us. So in fact, they have the right to use the easement of our property so that they can get in and out of the garage to then get to 22nd Street, out of the alley. So we're definitely there with other duplexes. And of course, the Silver Heights subdivision has other multi-units too. So it's definitely harmony with the areas located and it conforms, again, as Priscilla said, that it already includes, zoning's already included, that it's single families and duplex to family homes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that, are there any questions from the Commission for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you so much, and we may have further questions for you as we continue.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to invite anyone present who'd like to speak in favor of the application to come up to the podium now and state your name and give your testimony. Anyone in favor of the application?
Hi. Good luck. I'm Catherine Sanderson. We are under contract for this home currently. As we have other rentals in the area, we are reinvesting. We just sold our business property, and this is a reinvestment for us, so we are not from boards. We will definitely maintain it to its current standards, if not continue to improve it. So I'm definitely in favor of Catherine.
All right, any other, anyone else wishing to testify in favor of the application?
My name's Laura Westby, and we're at 2104 Juniper. That's our home, one house down from their property. I'm in favor of it. I also have another thing that, if you want me to wait for this, I was thinking about possibly in my home at 2104 Juniper having Airbnb, and I was thinking it was kind of on the same level as this, and I was just wondering if that was a possibility, or if I'll have to go through the same kind of a program as we're doing right now.
Be a good question for staff. I don't know if Priscilla wants to address that.
Yeah, you can come into the office, 'cause it depends if you're wanting conditional use or just an Airbnb. We can talk about it, though. If you wanna give me a call, I can give you a mic card.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to testify in favor of the application? Okay, is there anyone present wishing to testify in opposition to the application? Please approach the podium, state your name, thank you.
I'm Sissy McAndrew. I'm a Realtor here in Silver City. Been a resident for 23 years, and I don't know that I'm really opposing it, but I just want the Commission to realize, in making this decision tonight, what doors you are opening up to the future. I've been involved as Commissioner Reitensmith with a lot of preservation, and I've been getting a lot of people talking to me specifically about our neighborhoods, and concerns about Airbnbs and rentals, and what's going on, and changing the care to the community from residential A. I know that the Robellis were diligent, following all of the construction permitting and codes as they went through and developed their property, but there was a continual fear about the neighboring property at 2106, which, if this goes through this evening, I imagine you're gonna hear from those people as well, they are trying to sell that property right now, and they are mentioning the occupancy regulations in Section 3.3.2 C1G. And this is the one where Peter Russell was very involved in it, came to talk to the Realtors about it, and that was where you could develop a secondary unit on a property, but that the homeowner needs to live in one of the two properties, so that we're not getting into where we've got renters and the homeowners on the property. Recently, we've had a lot of sales of homes up in the residential area, they've gone to Airbnbs, and as you know, we've got other challenges with the town right now with collecting lodgers tax on those properties. So we have people that are moving here now, specifically a lot of folks from Colorado, and what's happened there is that, I think it actually tends to deal with the marijuana business, each county can have so much land and production. And so once one county gets filled up in producing marijuana, the growers go to the next county. And these folks have been seeing the rural communities that they purchased and have been living in for a number of years suddenly changing character, getting subdivided, getting into where we've got higher density, and they're leaving. And they're moving here because they feel that we have certain, a lifestyle here that they like, we've got a community that they like, and they like the housing units. But we're hearing from people, specifically even the visitor's center, of what's going on in the neighborhoods, and the fact that we do need rental units, that's definite, but we also need to be sure that we have owners nearby that are maintaining the properties or hopefully living in the properties. So all I'm asking is that as you make your decision tonight, you realize that this may be the first situation, but that very quickly, the house next door is probably coming to you, and we may be seeing more of this. And just making sure that as we move forward, you can justify how you're making your decisions and continue to protect our community. Are there any questions?
I didn't really quite understand this point that you were making about people coming from Colorado who are on the marijuana business. I'm not sure.
The main thing is, is that those communities have shifted from nice, small towns to where they're starting to get divided into multiple living units on the properties, and that they're no longer having the neighborhoods that they used to have, because everything's going up into a higher density. And the areas that would have been developed for housing are now basically growing areas. And the folks that we have moving in, all they're saying is, I've just lost my sense of community.
Okay, thank you.
So you're suggesting that we just should be conscious of the precedent that we're setting in terms of development and urbanization patterns?
Right, and this has worked out very well for the Robellis as far as being able to rent one unit and live in the other, and as Nadine mentioned, they've moved upstairs, they've moved downstairs, and so it's worked very well in that sense. If we turn it into a duplex, now we're into, you know, a set use pattern, and, you know, later down the road, who knows what might happen, but we might start getting to where people are selling one side or the other of a duplex. So we just need to realize when decisions are made, look at the big, long-term picture. Thank you.
Hold on just a second.
Well, I'm just reminding everyone that this is a conditional use permitting process, and so we will have the same evaluation and assessment in future as we are having now for any kind of change in Land Use Code.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, this is actually a question for staff, and it addresses one of the points that the lady made, the Realtor, about the density. Now, we have, our city, we're looking to ensure that we have an adequate inventory of rental units. Do we track the quantity? Do we have a target for the, either the density or the number of rental units in our community at this particular point?
We tracked it somewhat in the comprehensive plan as far as acreage size, but not really as far as dwelling units. So if there's any in residential A that were already there, they were just grandfathered in, but we haven't really tracked that aspect. We really only tracked acreage size.
So kind of in summary, the point the lady's making, we don't actually have a metric at the city level to address her point. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? We've got some folks who'd like to speak. Before I move back to the proponents who've testified already, is there anyone else present who'd like to testify in opposition to this, to this application? All right, I guess I'll ask the applicant if he'd like to speak again, may as well.
Yes, concerning what Sissy said, I mean, I understand Sissy's point, and I think she's very valid in what she's saying. Originally, we were working with Sissy at a much higher price, and realized our neighborhood seemed to have a limit for what is the exception in Silver Heights. But the main reason I'm here to talk about the situation with rentals is that it's a bigger issue that has been happening for a long time, because over the years, the 10 years, I've been renting one or the other unit. And so I would search out what was the going price for rentals. And what I found, any Silver Heights subdivision, there's a lot of properties that are zoned single-family, but for years are being rented out, split up, where one might be a basement and upper level, and they're both, the owner supposedly, without naming specific properties, where maybe they've got another home up in the hill or wherever, and they just end up renting both. The quality is poor, so when I'm looking at it, I mean, compared to mine, where I've actually, my husband and I put in firewall between the two, you know, upper and lower, we did a lot of work, and we put in heating and cooling systems that are quality systems. We did plumbing. As we moved in, we didn't realize this fixing up was that bad, so replacing so much of the plumbing, all the appliances, et cetera, to what we enjoy. So it really is a quality property, and if we were in another subdivision, it would sell for more. But my, as always, the issue of saying we're putting more duplexes, I think you need to go out to places like Smithville State, look at all the rentals, and the all of the different property managers. You can look on their website and see what's renting, because you're gonna see that, you know, these property managers, these Realtors slash property managers are renting out portions of a home that should be rented out, to the point where you have a home that over time has been added on to where, without any code or whatever, you know, in my neighborhood, where the deck was enclosed, the layer below it was closed, the quality is questionable. The garage was then converted into a place of worship, and then, you know, now then it got rented out, and it got to the point where there was never proper plumbing done. I mean, you know, when I see all of a sudden the guy who's renting what is a converted garage, and people say, oh, this is a beautiful carriage house. You have a lot of properties here, they do cosmetic change, but they're not structurally, you know, the plumbing, the everything, heating, the cooling, the sewer system is not proper. So in my mind, maybe you need to go and track all the property managers, what they're posting to see, because I'm not gonna start listing who they are, but it's not just downtown, where, you know, I see a posting that says, this is a two-bedroom home, but you can only have up to two people because of the sewer line. You know, I understand, that's a very old house. Our home is 1965, but we brought it up to date, you know, we, but there's a lot of homes in our subdivision that are split up, that are not properly done. And so, but the property managers in Grand County will still rent it, whatever the personnel is, they'll go ahead. So that was to be my only suggestion, and right now, we consider our property a pretty quality rental compared to most. It was hard to find it comparable.
Thank you, Mr. Reitensmith. Any questions, Commissioner?
I have three.
Commissioner Reitensmith?
Stop. The first one is, the city departments have all responded with no comment.
Correct.
And I wanted to assure myself that the police department didn't raise issues of crime or anything like that.
They did not.
Okay, this is question number one. Question number two, one of the concerns that Sissy raised was that the possibility of selling half of a, of a property or a house, and the Land Use Code, I know, has changed a while there to decrease the size where you could still subdivide, in effect, would this property even be eligible for that, given it's a foot below and above?
They wouldn't be able to subdivide it. Well, if it's above and below, it's different than side by side. But you can't really sell property that way, above and below.
You could condominiumize it, I suppose, right?
Yeah, but then that would take it to a different level than a duplex, and that's definitely not allowed in residential A, not even with a conditional use permit. So if there was a residential B, then possibly yes, but not in residential A.
Thank you. My third question is a tipping point, I think Sissy made a valid point about when you get to a certain number of rental properties, things can go downhill. And I have to admit, not in Silver City, but my mother and I have a business with quite a lot, 27 of them in fact, and it's very difficult keeping them to the standard where issues don't begin to go downhill. And I would hate to say no to something, because it could become an issue. Do you see that we're at a tipping point now at four of where an area could be great? Because reading the fair requirements, one of them is that it doesn't affect the character of the neighborhood. What are your view on that?
Well, we didn't feel like this one in particular did. If you bring up the case of Airbnbs, we just started permitting that, so that would be on a different. But there is still the rule, if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you have to live in one or the other, or the other. So in this particular case, we, in our department, didn't feel like it was detrimental.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, I guess. Do we have any statistics, have we done any assessment of that Silver Heights neighborhood in terms of what the ratio of owner occupied to rental property is? Do we have any way of knowing that?
No. We haven't, we haven't done that type of research. I don't know if anyone else in town has, but we haven't.
Okay.
And this would be along the lines of Chairman Seidel's question and Commissioner Sanders' question, I mean, in terms of data and urban density, I mean, you've mentioned, we've mentioned many times Airbnb today. Is there any kind of statistics on Airbnbs and, you know, generally duplexes? Because I don't think, you know, to the Nadine Robelli's point, you know, that we have enforcement abilities on the Commission, but we can look at data, and so that's my question, is this, is what, what is the status of data, and if it's not there, is it a resource question?
The data's not there, although we do, we're gonna start updating our comprehensive plan every year, so that's data that we can do, especially with the Airbnbs being new. It's something we can add in there, but the data's not there.
And is it a resource question, or is it just simply something that has not been a priority for any number of reasons?
It hasn't, no. And we just haven't done it.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the Commission?
No.
I have none. Okay. Sanders?
Okay. I just wanna speak quickly to my intentions with this property, because I really don't care what else happens in town with other properties and conditional use, bigger picture. All I'm concerned about is this particular property. I can tell you I am far too busy to run an Airbnb, Nick knows that. I am, our other rental property, we've had for almost 11 years. We tend to attract long-term tenants, that's my preference in fact, so if I can So if I can get somebody who wants to move in there and live there forever, all the better. As far as the neighborhood goes, it would be no different as far as occupancy goes if my family and I were to live in one unit and we were to rent another unit versus renting out both units to different families. So just something to keep in mind. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
No question.
All right. Is there any more testimony in favor of or opposed to the application? All right. Hearing none, I will turn to the Commission for discussion and potential motion.
Well, first of discussion, my...
Oh, sorry, and I apologize. I should have done this, and I have not done this recently, but because someone tried to talk to me about it, I should ask the question that we should always ask in hearings, which is whether any member of the Commission has had to expert a communication about the case and spoken to you about it outside of this meeting?
I have not had any.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Continue.
Okay. Thank you. I think the point about having metrics about either density and/or specific count of rentals is a very good point, and also should probably be considered by staff if... It seems to me that that supports the overall objective of how the city wants to be managed, is if we want to manage with data, then we need data, right? So that's probably a good thing to discuss, and maybe staff can come back with a suggestion on that our next meeting.
Yes, I can talk to Nadine and see what time or effort we have to do this, but I can definitely find out.
And I just want to be clear. This doesn't have any bearing on this particular case, but this is looking to the future.
It's to the future.
Okay. Thank you.
It'd be a really nice thing. I mean, maybe we could get a Bieber student from U of M to spend the summer down here or something. That would be... Any other discussion from the Commission?
I would just reinforce that idea that if we have more metrics and data, we're not dealing with anecdotal, that evidence, observe... it's actual data, not just what we think we see, what we are in a neighborhood.
Well, we'll take it. Well, if there's no further discussion, does someone like to... Does someone like to make a motion? I think everyone's speaking wants.
I made the motion to accept this conditional use permit.
It's going to be approved, I think. We've got the language here. And just for folks to know, there are... Well, we've got a motion to approve. Is there a second to the motion?
I second the motion to approve CU-19-02.
Beautiful. Thank you. So a motion to a second for everyone's justification. There's kind of two categories of things we do in the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there are some things on which we are the quote-unquote "final determination," and then there are many things on which we just make a recommendation to the Town Council. Things like zone changes, for instance, are things that the council ultimately decides on. We just advise them, and it's up to them what they do. It's a difference that maybe doesn't actually matter in real life because even the things that we are the supposed deciders on can easily end or often appeal to the Town Council. And so in the end, we mostly end up advising a lot of the time if it's controversial. But this is something that tonight we theoretically get to approve, approve it. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Well, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve CU-19-02, conditional use permit for property addressed at 2110 North Juniper for a... to allow a... to be used for a duplex in a residential A zoning district, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Do we need a roll call bar on that? I didn't even ask.
I'm not sure, but we could do one.
If it makes you... Yeah, just to be on the safe side.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye.
Commissioner Kara?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And I want to say thank you to everyone that took the time to come out tonight. Too often, we take action on these sorts of applications with very little input from anyone. Sometimes we don't even get the property owner here. And I think this was a worthwhile larger discussion about community planning of the sort that I wish we had more often. And that happened because you all came here and instigated that conversation, and I hope this one doesn't stop after tonight's meeting. So we will move on. We have no business... no new business on the agenda and no community forum schedules, but we do have staff here, and I assume that they have a report.
We wanted to welcome Commissioner Wheaton Smith to our Commission.
Excellent. That was easy.
Yeah. And I also wanted to add, I've worked closely with the GIS department in Western. They have students that like to do projects just around town. So that's something I can pitch to her and let her know, maybe they can help me with that data. They usually help me with addressing, which is a never-ending job, but it's something that I can talk to them about.
But also kind of boring. This would really be a way to dig into the power of GIS in a way that they probably don't get to a lot.
Well, yeah. GIS is a lot of data. But I like having data for that reason because it helps my... it makes my job easier. So they've helped me with a few projects and given me data, and I've given them data. So it's something I can talk to them about.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a report from staff. Move to reports from the Commission.
I do remind everyone that on Thursday, this Thursday, it's 6:00 PM at the Commons or what's also known as the Volunteer Center, there is a neighborhood meeting that I have RSVP'd for, but I don't think... I think if anyone else wants to be there, we'd be aware that we cannot have a quorum, or we have to be avoidant.
We can have two of us there.
Two of us there. So I will be there. This is for relating to a couple of meetings back where we had this situation with the recovery... a recovering addict's location on Swan Street. And the police will be there, I think, and...
Yeah.
Community Development will be there.
Yeah.
Wasn't the major kind of sticking point of that case, the interpretation of the public nuisance ordinance and how the neighbors felt that the nuisance or the ability of the police department to police that kind of ordinance was not to their liking?
I don't know if I'd characterize that as the major sticking point. I think it was a whole set of issues, and I think what the purpose of the... of that... of the upcoming meeting is, is to have a more cohesive neighborhood discussion about how to build the neighborhood as part of the community and to start to overcome maybe some of the issues of crime, of noise, and of nuisance. But I think it's really about improving the neighborhood and the cohesion of the neighborhood as I understand it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kara. Commissioner Sanders, do you have any other reports?
I do not have any.
All right. Commissioner Wheaton Smith, I expect a speech.
I look forward to enjoying my time on the Commission. In my previous job, from which I retired after many years in the federal government, metrics were incredibly important. And we had very good collection systems, and that's how we could predict certain trends. I fully agree with you. I meant to say that earlier. I'm totally sold on it.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Wheaton Smith. And welcome to the Commission for folks who aren't familiar with the new Commissioner's background. He's served as a Town Counselor in Silver City previously. He's been our town clerk for a period of time and certainly a lot of involvement in the federal government and in local governments in the various places where he's lived. And really, one of those resumes, when you get a look at it, that you think, "Gosh, even if I didn't know this guy, he would be a great addition." And maybe despite the fact that I know this guy, he's a great addition.
Thank you.
All right. I have no further reports. Is there any community input? Anyone here want to speak on something? Hearing no community input, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Motion to second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. It will be adjourned.